Number one, item is artist number twenty-two entitled Jump. That has been changed around a little bit. I think what the board is going to get prepared, the letter being sent out to the people. Give them thirty days, is that correct? Thirty days to move it, is that right? And then the action will be taken after that if there's not been. Moved to the back, got rid of, or whatever you want to call it. So, any questions are, is open to the public now if you want to say anything about the Jump artists. They want the board to want anything they want to say. I agree with this Jump artists that stuff has, they need to be cleaned up. You think these people might need a little help? People will be able to have some good. If they want to get rid of it, we'll work through that for them. If they want to move, we'll work through that for them. We have several places around town that definitely need some attention. That's what this is all about, of course. And pray that the looks are down. This is artist number twenty-two entitled Jump. Have they things to say? Last call. We're moving right along there. We're going into a regular monthly meeting of the police rise, Mr. Reinhardt. Anybody, please, may I stand, please, ladies and gentlemen?
That's correct. Dear Lord, watch over this council as we make decisions to try to improve town of Maryville and surrounding areas. Watch over the town employees as they go about their daily work. Watch over the police department as they go about protecting us. Watch over the residents, Lord, and watch over everybody with the holiday season coming up and all the traveling. And hopefully everyone will have a good and happy Merry Christmas. In the name we pray.
Amen. Please turn around and please, I pray.
Litigations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any add-ons to the assembly? Okay. A prayer of amendment, so the director meeting will over. Thank you, two thousand and eighteen, I have a motion for that.
Who am I to say?
Motion. Thank you very much. People of financial statement, preparing actually for the budget for two thousand and eighteen, I have a motion for that.
Motion.
Second. Oh, thank you. Okay, we have quite a few things here under mayor's comments, I don't know if I get through all of them. First of all, there'll be a Christmas at schoolhouse up here at nine AM, that's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the nineteenth, it's the elementary Christmas program and the fifth grade Christmas play.
That's at school here at nine AM next Wednesday. Okay. There'll also be a blood drive at the school from nine to one on the twelfth. That's Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. Okay?
Well, this is for Mr. Corn's stepson, Rowley Carter, who's been in Texas Hospital for a hundred and sixty days. He's seventeen, he's seventeen, and he's had lots and lots of issues.
So that'll be the twelfth at the school from nine to one PM.
Yes, sir. And it's in the conference room in the old building, so you can come up and just go in that side door. And from what I'm understanding, if you have a child or a grandchild that attends Maryville, you can sign in and they'll receive five Panther books for you giving blood. And we have a Panther store that they can purchase things with. So make sure if you do have a child or a grandchild, that you sign in so they can get those Panther books. Big chocolate candy bars, we love those.
I'm sure there'll be a sign up there.
Yes, sir, there should be.
The racing people work up there.
Well, usually right outside, you can see it, the blood, blood drop thing, the truck will be there.
All right. Blood drive on twelfth, nine to one. Okay, we've got two kids this Wednesday at four thirty at the Methodist Church on Brayden Street. Excellent program. Our Christmas parade, of course, you know what the weather was last Saturday. Washed out. It'll be this Saturday at six PM, and I think they'll start something at the festival at ten that morning, is that correct? Ten that morning. And then the latticade parade will be at six on the fifteenth, this coming Saturday, the fifteenth. You know, people are always coming in here looking for a job. The Texas Department of Criminal Justice will be here December the seventeenth, that's next Tuesday week. If you're interested, I'll leave it up here, there's numerous jobs that, to be filled. The only place that they don't pay the sign-on bonus is at Jasper. Woodville and Tyler, if I have it correct, they'll have a, I guess they got a office on a trailer, they're gonna be here next, December, at the Puvvie, be down at the Puvvie. And so I'm gonna leave this up here, anyone wants to look at what jobs or...
Does he have a time?
I don't know, he didn't tell me. I figured about nine o'clock in the morning, they'd probably be here. And how long, I don't know. He, I did, he did, but he came in.
It says nine to four. Yes.
Did it say, did it say that on there?
December seventeenth, nine to four, Maryville City Hall.
Okay, we'll have a different one, I guess. That's good.
We put your packages on.
Okay, all right. Anyway, here's, listening, open it up there from, what'd you say, nine to four?
Yes, sir.
Nine to four, at the Puvvie on the seventeenth. So if you see anyone that's interested in this type of work, they can come and talk to them on December seventeenth at Puvvie. Okay. Mr. Frank Kendall, is that his last name?
Campbell.
Campbell?
Kendall.
Mr. Frank Kendall.
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 Kendall. Okay, I get it right. Friday, the fourteenth, at six-thirty, they're gonna have a banquet, Christmas.
Banquet.
Banquet.
At the community center.
On South Street over here. And that's just coming Friday, Friday, six-thirty.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you want to say anything about this?
Y'all are all invited, just come. And the Haymans are gonna be there to sing.
Okay. All right, good.
And you said that's at the community center, is it?
Yes. At the community.
Always at the community.
At the community center.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought you'll have...
No, not at the church.
Okay.
At the community center.
Okay. There, I have a fundraising for, this is Mr. Keith Walker's brother. I'm sure some of you have heard of that. I don't know if it was a stroke or an arrhythmia he had. He's at the Tulane. Medical Center, of course, what I know of. They've taken part of this bringing out. He kind of has good days and bad days. Anyway, Sheriff's Department is having a barbecue on, what is it? December the twentieth. Okay. December the twentieth, there, there are ten dollars a plate, barbecue chicken. There's a list on the bulletin board up here, ten or more plates, they'll be delivered here on the twentieth at eleven AM, ten dollars a ticket. If you want to write a check, you write to Bruce Walker. But I hope we get a good turnout for this, that's Mr. Keith Walker's brother. He has helped the town, Mr. Brogo has really, a lot of things that we've had help, need help on during the year, and they think helps us. So I hope we get a good response to this, to the benefit of Mr. Bruce Walker. Something I'm glad to announce, a statement, Tides Street is completed. It was, you saw it?
Thank you.
I knew it was coming. We had a few problems with a contractor, getting contractors and everything else. We worked through it. It's completed, property, Wednesday, we'll take the barricades down and you can drive over. So there's been quite a few jobs that's been done here in town this year. But, and I thank the board for helping out on that. So we're gonna move on to other things for next year. So I'm glad, I'm glad that is completed. Another thing I'd like to announce is back up on the Hill Street in Goff, that's up here in all of Maryville. That's, the post contract is supposed to be here this week. I think it's about ten or twelve homes will be tied in. And I'd be glad to get through with that project. So it takes time to get things done, but we are going forward. So thank you for your patience. Okay. I think that's about all, I got under mayor's comments. Left someone else on the board, has something else? Anyone, anything else? We all settled, we all good? Okay. All right. Now under our business, artist number twenty-two entitled Jump. Is there any discussion on that? I was gonna, anything to motion, is accepted?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Now under garbage rates, Waste Solution charges, now this is contracted by the police jury. They charge the town thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents per customer pick up trash. The town only charges the customers here in Maryville, eight dollars. So the town is a saving, a saving, five dollars and eighty-five cents per month. All right? Now we had this on the agenda for last month, give you time to discuss, the contract for them is up on two thousand and twenty-one, I'll talk to the police jury, two thousand and twenty-one.
So this price is being through today?
Two thousand and twenty-one, we'll go through on price thirteen eighty-five. But I feel like we need to increase what the customer part of it is, because the town is assuming five eighty-five per customer per month, that adds up to a pretty good little bit of money, you know, if you cover that over a year, basically. So I'm gonna leave that up to the board, what you'd like to do with this.
I got a proposal. Put the board to consider. I'd like to see us go up one dollar, the residents, but put it at nine dollars. The town paying five eighty-five now, I'd like to raise that to six dollars. If we leave it there, that way we can deal with the budget, we know what it's gonna be, no matter what increases come and everything like that here on out. It gives us a round number, which makes it easier for, when you're doing the budget, to figure and stuff like that. So really, it's not a full, it's not a full dollar for the residents, because we can knock off fifteen cents. But if you look at anywhere around this part of the area, as far as I know, what few that I've looked at, I haven't been here a long time, but it's almost unheard of for a town, which is great, it's wonderful, but it's almost unheard of for a town to pick up anybody's percentage of any on the trash. That would help, that would help give us a little relief, get that back. And with the know where we stand.
I mean, Mr. Engage a Dollar is, the town is already paying for it, I just, if you think a dollar is fine, that would be awesome.
I'm gonna leave it up to the board if you want to.
I mean, you're basing that off of the current budget now, right?
Correct. Which would offer a rate, which would give us what we're operating up to twenty-one.
Right. So instead of forty-five, it's forty-six, the total.
Yeah. We could have made that up. Or, or... Because we've got other things, we've got other things that are going up that we have no control over with and everything. And, you know, that, even the six dollars and everything, we could really use that, but I know that that's, that's what's been set up and everything, we need it, and try to continue to, to pay part of the portion, so for the residents, as long as we can afford it. Way on down the line, town may not even be able to afford that, but for twenty-one, we're good. But that just, that just rounds everything off and you go from there.
But, but come two thousand and twenty-one, we'll have to talk about that.
We'll have to talk about it.
Okay.
How good is that?
You good with that?
Yeah, me too. The only problem I got is that water line, that cutoff valve, they got in the middle of my road over there, now they won't back down my road and pick up the trash.
Okay. Call me tomorrow and we'll address that issue.
I got you, boss.
I didn't know we'd that bad.
Well, they, they said, well, they told my daughter in the home, last week I was going to the doctor, and they told her that they wasn't going back down the road no more because they said they were getting in trouble for backing over the cutoff valve. And as far as I know, ain't nobody said nothing to them about backing over the cutoff valve, but...
We asked.
And they said they was gonna come down here and notify y'all about it, for which obviously they didn't do that either. So...
Call me tomorrow, okay?
It's a good action.
And motion on the increase on the garbage rate?
I'm voting motion.
Can I ask what the amount exactly was gonna be again?
One dollar, increase.
Instead of paying eight, you're gonna pay nine. So your, your whole garbage, your bill's gonna be, your water bill is eighteen, your sewer is eighteen, your garbage is gonna go from eight to nine, so now it's a total of forty-six dollars.
Forty-six dollars.
Before we were paying five eighty-five, we're gonna pay six, so we're gonna help you out with fifteen cents. Your mother.
Okay. All right. Next, under our business, Maryville Historical Society, I think board members have something else to add on that.
I called the ethics board today, and they said that with us three, we have to excuse ourselves from voting.
You called the, same ethics board?
Ethics.
It was who did you talk to?
I talked to...
Because I talked to them right after the last meeting, and they gave me the answer that as long as you're not a paid member of the museum, that you have no financial gain involved in it.
So meaning even if we pay any?
Meaning that you, no.
That you're making money.
You're not capable of making any money from that decision, and that you could vote on it, since you have no financial gains from it.
Was it a chat?
I talked to John, somebody I get his last name, he was the, one of the attorneys, so...
It's like a tip, but it wasn't tip.
We'll just, just...
What'd you say, Jim?
We'll just pull the motion. It is a one oh.
Well...
We just have to keep that.
It's not, it's, it's, it is a lie, I know it's a lie. And I think maybe we can try with some fundraising. I don't mind doing them, y'all know I don't, I'm always asking for help from somebody's sake.
We're just gonna have to keep that. People in Maryville's just gonna have to understand that we can't hear good dates. Like, one of the biggest things that we hear every year, it's getting rid of the dates, you just can't do it.
It's such a, with the ethics.
Well, and I think...
You just have to be so careful.
Well, from what I've kind of checked into, our ordinance, the town voted no open container, so...
That some of your, maybe museum property, how you can get into museum property is a private thing?
I don't know, see, that's where I was...
I'm confused on the...
Yeah, I don't think, from what I read, it's...
It says private or, private or public property. So that's, that's, that's how it's stated.
That would be somebody's house.
Right.
So can you have it up in the...
But from what I'm getting, you can't even, you can't sit in your front yard.
No, you can't. You can't sit in your front yard. That's why it's not just voted, so that went through, yeah. Which I don't think people realize, that we're actually voting on, and that's, yeah.
We're not gonna worry about it, no more, we're done doing this fight. We're just, people are gonna have to understand, and we're gonna have to have some support for the town.
Well, and I'm hoping we can have the thing Saturday, because I know you have a lot of vendors, I've seen the way it's...
Okay, so we don't make any money off of it.
Well, we're a museum, I make the money.
Right, well, for Saturday, but maybe these vendors will come, because that's what's happened, y'all like...
We don't make money off of vendors.
We don't make money off of them.
It brings people there, so it's...
Maybe you can start doing a percentage of what they...
See what I'm saying?
It's too much, we don't have enough people for that.
I don't want to pay a gate if you only have five vendors, but I'm just saying.
Well, we're looking at having a couple festivals, and we're, not this year, but next year, starting next year, because most are charging gates at all of them.
Well, and the more vendors and the more activity going on inside, people's not gonna mind to pay at the gate to go check out what's going on inside, you know, just people drive by.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put the corn over in the gates, so that...
That's good.
They might, by the gate pass, plus by the corn pass.
That might help because...
Yeah, because a lot of people are just going to the mall, not going to, not knowing that much.
So you're withdrawing, okay. I have a motion to accept this as a withdrawal from the president and mayor of the Historical Society.
Motion.
I have a motion. Second, I'll favor. Okay, thank you. All right, now under new business here, the former Mr. Travis Brooks is commissioner for Bullard, fire district number one, he has served on this for numerous years. I think he's gonna have a motion to accept Mr. Travis Brooks.
Motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
All favor? Thank you very much. Is that woman lady here, is she here?
Yes, Angela.
All right, you're up, ma'am, Boy is Financial Service.
Well, let me just say, I, I reached out to Angela because, you know, we're wanting to retain employees, and I felt like they need some type of retirement plan. So I reached out to her, because I know that's her area, so what you have in mind? I'm Angela Bryant, I've been in financial services industry since two thousand and nine. Well, most of y'all probably know me, David and Yolanda Stone, that's right. So like Sarah said, she reached out to me to try to come up with an idea to help employees save for retirement, maybe life insurance, college savings, things like that, that's what I do. Initially, we had talked about meeting with employees to talk about how to save and rock IRAs, things along that line. After talking to Sarah a little bit, trying to better understand what the city was wanting to accomplish, we talked about an idea that, where the city can actually have a retirement plan and not cost the city anything. There's ways that we can do that through Voya, I won't bore you with all the details, because I'll be here all night. There, Voya is, used to be ING, most of you probably heard of ING, it's called Voya now, but they have a standard plan document, a retirement plan document. If you adopt the standard plan document, which quite honestly is the same as any 401K that you, that you deal with, then there's no fees to the city to do that. There's no minimum number of employees that have to participate, there's no minimum annual contribution amount. The only, I guess, cost you could say the city would incur is that whoever processes payroll would have to make that deduction and send it in, you know, so I guess you add a few minutes to that person's day. But other than that, there's no hard costs to the city in doing that. And I have some materials I can leave with y'all, y'all are welcome to ask any questions. The, another benefit of it is the employee can contribute, the city does not have to match. If at some point in the future, the city is in a position that they are able to match, then they can do that. But it's a way to get the plan started with the employee contributions and not cost the city anything in doing that. I think that would help with what Sarah was saying, employee retention, you know, have a benefit there for that, so. I'm pretty much after everything, I mean.
I think it'd be, you know, not gonna cost us anything, I think employees, you know, depending on the employees, if they are cold, if they're getting a cold, and they just want you to come visit, I think, I, I as a board member, don't have any, any problem with that.
Well, I'm here to just educate and inform, I mean, you would love for Voya to have their business, but to me, it's more important to get them to start saving. Again, the conversations Sarah and I have had, that there's been employees that have been with the city for many, many years, and have never had that type of benefit, so maybe a good benefit for employees. It's more cost-effective for them to do it through a plan at work, rather than on their own. If it's something that the city isn't interested in, we can still go down the route of helping them out individually, but it's more cost-effective for the employees to do it, you know, inside of...
What, what we could do is call, and then if you're convenient, you can come and take the gun down and just talk to all of them at one time.
That sounds good, yeah.
Okay?
And when y'all get done, I have some literature I'll read.
I'll give you ever a phone number?
I'll, I'll give you.
I'll give you, she's got some stuff, too.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Police personnel. Keith, you got Mr. Daniel Moore for full time to reserve.
He asked for, due to his health, something's come up, and he's got to drop him full time, because he can no longer get, get his save card, but he wants to remain in reserve for the town of Maryville, and he's a good officer, he knows what he's doing. And we could really keep him on the course if we can.
Any questions from the board?
I really hate the rules in full time.
Well, I do too, but like you say, matter of fact, he came in yesterday, he gonna come in again tomorrow, he still gonna keep coming in, so we can pay him. And he's still doing his job like he did full time, trust me.
Right motion? Okay, I'll vote, I'll second.
Second.
I'll favor. Okay. All right, we have another here, go up to reserves to full time. Marino, chief?
Yeah, he's been a reserve officer now about six or seven months, and he knows his job, and we got him scheduled to take his test tomorrow, his physical training test, where you get entered in academy on January.
January, okay.
We've already got him set up for that, too, and he'll be a good asset to us.
So he's going full time?
He's taking James' place.
He won't get the vehicle till he gets...
No.
No problem.
But he'll still be able to drive a vehicle to the academy.
Just can't take it home?
Yeah.
How far you live from there?
I live in Newsville.
No, I don't live there.
It's a good little ways. It's less than fifty miles, a little.
Yeah, it's a good mile.
But I think he would help us out tremendously.
What's your, do you have registered experience?
Yes, ma'am, I went to...
I mean, I looked at your app.
Well, we voted in advance.
Yes, and we voted in advance, and we saw this.
Yeah, and I haven't had any complaints on them. Like I said before, I haven't had any complaints on our officer, they've all been...
Well, if y'all get any complaints on anybody, make sure and call me first.
We need to, we...
How would that work?
Well, I'd just like to say, they've been doing an awesome job.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Because they worked my butt off today.
Oh, that was Mr. Moore, by the way.
Yes.
They are doing a good job, they get a lot of drugs off, so, yes.
We've got two on our way now.
Okay, anything to motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll favor. All right. So you're moving, serving full time, sir. Okay, we're moving down here to public participation, I don't know if any of... I don't know if any of you have, car wash got sold, I don't know, I think that's Mr. Fisher in the back, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You want to get up and say a little bit about it?
Yes, sir, the person's obviously the storage building's in the car wash, from Miss Donna. My wife's in Maryville, I put the points in, so don't hold that against me, right? We'd like to get in and refurbish the car wash, get it back to operating, back for the citizens. And get the storage units back up to a hundred percent, clean it up. We are going to come to council when it's appropriate, start a business, we're starting up in the winter time. We would like to look, it might be reducing our rate somewhat on the trash and the sewer and the water. And for me and my wife to have the time to discuss that with the board, maybe next meeting or whatnot. But it is a startup, and we're going to put some money into the car wash. And I know the winter months, we're not going to get a whole lot of, get off the business that we would in the summer months.
You'd be surprised.
You'd be surprised.
We're excited about it, no doubt.
Where do you live, Mr. Fisher?
I live in Moss Bluff.
Moss Bluff, okay. Or what, your proposal, you know, I like, I wish you'd come and talk to me about that.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful to them, because, you know, I know when we were doing it, you know, I don't know how many of y'all know me and know my situation, but, you know, my life sort of changed in two thousand and nine, and I've just been trying to play catch-up since then and keep things going and keep things running. And I never really thought about that, it was just what we always paid. So I think that would help to, you know, to help them get started up, if that's something that can be considered. And, you know, perhaps the board could look at, you know, if you'd like me to share some of my information at some point. But, you know, we, we kind of talked with people who have, you know, who have similar businesses where the water is metered, which I realize we don't meter here. But, you know, if those kind of things could be taken into consideration and even given them a period of time, you know, where they're not at full capacity, if that is the amount that the board decides on. But, you know, it may be something to look at as far as, I don't know how that's figured, you know, what a business pays as opposed to what a resident pays. And, you know, what they're charged for water, because like I said, we just paid it and I didn't ever question it.
What was it that you paid?
We paid, I think it was two hundred and six dollars a month for water.
Two hundred and nineteen, what I got.
Is it just water?
No.
That was water and sewer.
That was all together.
Right, but the other places that I've talked to, like for instance, Senator Ritter, I talked to the guy who has the car wash that's on the east side, I don't know if any of y'all are familiar with that, we were coming in from Lake Charles. But it's a similar setup to what is here, except his is a five-way car wash, it doesn't have anything automatic. It just has, you know, the car wash and the vacuum cleaners, very similar to ours, but it's five. So they pay their water and their sewer together in Doritter, just like it's structured here, but the water is metered, so.
And why is there much of the water?
The person that I talked to was the owner, and he said over the last eight months that his water had averaged a hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Sixty-nine, one sixty-nine?
One sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Over the last eight months, that includes sewer and garbage pickup.
Well, because it shows here, I'm raised, the car wash water usage rate is a hundred and thirty. Yes, and then the sewer is seventy-five.
And that includes garbage pickup. And that was my question, because I heard earlier y'all talked about the residents are charged thirteen eighty-five. Is there a higher amount for sewer?
Charged eight.
Eight, okay. So that was my question, is there a higher cost for a business? I mean, they, they only picked up garbage once a week at ours, like they did there.
Well, water and sewer, there is, but mostly, mostly business there, they're all container.
No, you had the same garbage rate as the residents did, because all the other businesses had dump tanks.
Okay, so we were paying seventy-five for that and?
That's for the sewer.
That's the sewer.
Okay, what is the residence's garbage pickup, is that including their sewer?
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars. Okay, so. So what were we paying for garbage?
Eight dollars, because y'all don't have a dumpster.
Right.
So they was charging residents.
So of the two hundred and nineteen, eight dollars of that was garbage pickup? A hundred and thirty for water and seventy-five for sewer? Like I said, I never questioned it, it wasn't my project. My husband had a, my husband had a small business in rental property, he had an aneurysm in two thousand and nine, and my, my world changed. So I just tried to pay the bills. But anyway, I think for a new owner and with the intention of, you know, trying to get small businesses into our community, you know, there is that startup, and there's going to be a period of time where they need water to get things started. But I certainly wouldn't think they would be using that much water during that period, and then, you know.
And like the sewer, because all it is, is what's going, I mean, there's no bathrooms.
No, it's just. Yes, there's two, the, the, the mechanical of the car wash are, there's those two, they're, they're called pits, where the water, after you wash your car, runs through there, and those two pits run through the sewer system. And that's the only water that, the sewer that the car wash uses there. But again, I think if y'all could, you know, if, if the board could consider, you know, maybe some, you know, giving some consideration to startups and pulling some business back into our community, then that could be a way for everybody.
From what I've understanding, this has been set at those prices for a while, so we can definitely do some research to see, you know, the surroundings, what's going on, because I don't think any of us, that's been set like that for.
Well, we have owned it how long, David?
I don't know.
Since probably two thousand, you know, and I think that's what we always pay. So, but again, I never questioned it, we just did.
And it would benefit the town and our officers.
Somebody has talked to me, moved to there.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else under public participation, would like to say anything, anyone else?
I want to add.
Yes, ma'am?
I noticed that this right next to the, the city hall is sold, are they going to do something with this building?
Is there any metal here?
Yeah, or the little building is, and a couple of bathrooms and all of there. It says sold on the sign.
And you mean like recently to them?
It says sold, I just was curious.
Seven juice, yes, that's what it's. Oh, yeah.
Do you inside y'all?
I was just curious. Yeah, I would just, I would just be a no.
Okay, is anyone else? Last call. Anything else, anybody of motion, the board is adjourned?
Motion.
Anthony's coming up.